Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April 21st, 2022. We could please have quiet in the room, please? Chief? Thank you. All right. First off, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins? Mayor Abu Wasli? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda this evening, we have a proclamation for Global Love Day, May 1st, 2022. Sarah will be reading this one.
I will, and I understand there's not anybody here to accept it, so we will read in. Take this here. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate in establishing love and peace in our planet, on our planet. Whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus towards, quote, "unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves," unquote. Whereas we are one humanity on this planet, whereas all life is interconnected and interdependent, whereas all share in the universal bond of love, whereas love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness, whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity, whereas together we make a difference through love. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., invites mankind to declare May 1st, 2022 as Global Love Day, a day of forgiveness and unconditional love. Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each and every day. Now therefore I, Sarah Menser, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby dedicate and proclaim May 1st, 2022 as Global Love Day and invite all residents to observe this day, which honors the public cause for global love, world peace, and universal joy.
And first or second, I guess, we have a presentation, service award presentation for former volunteer firefighter J.R. Block. Hope I said that right, Block?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Do that.
Counsel? Tonight, it's my honor to recognize a man that has served the City of Marion as a volunteer firefighter for over 41 years. J.R. Block moved into the City of Marion from rural Marion back in the 1980s at the age of 23. He applied to be a member of the Marion Fire Department as a volunteer and a member of the Marion Firefighters Association. On his application, it asked, "Please explain in a few words why you wish to become a member of the association." His answer was, "To help do my civic duty. And I'm interested in firefighting." Firefighter Block has done his civic duty for over 40 years. J.R. was self-employed as a carpenter and would show up for almost every fire call, day or night. I would say that J.R. responded to more fires than any other firefighter. I do not have the exact stats on that, but I know in my 30 years, he was at over 90% of the calls I responded to. J.R. could be counted on to help out at events, helping to educate the public in fire safety, as well as all the fundraisers that the association had to raise money for new equipment. Our volunteer firefighters, also known as paid-on-call, as they do receive a stipend for their service, would have meetings and training every second and fourth Wednesday, and sometimes on weekends. J.R. seemed to always be there. I also want to acknowledge J.R.'s wife, Kathy, who was a staunch supporter of the department and the association, including volunteering her time at the annual steak fry. The family of a volunteer makes a lot of sacrifices. Interrupted Thanksgiving dinners, calls during Christmas, 3:00 a.m. in the morning, the pager goes off. They make a lot of sacrifices. So I'd like to take this time to actually thank your wife, Kathy. It's the families that make our firefighters who they are, and they're very special, and we need to always remember that. So at this time, I want to also present to J.R. For over 40 years of service to the Marion Fire Department, J.R. Block, thank you for providing 41 years of dedication and service to the citizens of Marion and the Marion Fire Department. True honor.
Thanks very much. It was an honor for me, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. All right. At this time, we have a public forum. This section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Anybody is here to speak on anything on the agenda but that's not part of the public hearing, please come up to the podium now. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda. This will include items A1 through G1. Resolution numbers 30468 through 30483.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items A1 through G1, resolutions. I can't read that far away. 30468 through 30483. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 30484, approving bond purchase agreement, providing for the issuance of $10,760,000, general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2022A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution 30484, approving bond purchase agreement, providing for the issuance of $10,760,000, general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2022A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Any discussion? Do we have a presentation?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have Michael Maloney with DA Davidson, the underwriter on this bond issuance, as well as our municipal advisor, Tiana Poohler, from Independent Public Advisors, to present on the topic. I thought I'll take it away.
Counsel, good to see you again today. Happy to bring the results here back for you. We'll start with the easy stuff. There's no inside baseball on this one. I think we are all aware that interest rates are rising. There's global inflationary concerns, so that's a headline thing, whether it's treasuries or mortgage rates or municipal bonds. So that's something we've obviously been tracking over the last few years. That being said, there's two factors for any municipal bond issuance. One is the general market conditions. That's sort of the yield curve index that we model. And then the city's specific credit and security pledge, using the general obligation, that's the strongest full faith and credit pledge of the city, and the city's outstanding AA1 rating was affirmed and applied to this transaction. That's the second highest rating category, and we need to make sure pricing was in line with that under current market conditions. We've been working with the financing team to understand where the pre-pricing and marketing would be, and then updating that daily based on market movement. There was no change in the financial markets from Tuesday to Wednesday, one of the few days we haven't seen interest rates go up over the last month or so. That being said, we were able to finalize things based on Wednesday, so yesterday's closing benchmark. We again reviewed the pre and post pricing of comparable transactions with the financing team. I think the most recent comparable transactions here in Iowa would be the City of Urbrendale, sold almost the same type of bond issue as you guys did, about $11 million AA1 rating, and Polk County, which is actually a natural AAA rating, about $25 million of bonds. The final results for pricing were in line with the City of Urbrendale and actually priced a little bit better than Polk County for overlapping maturities. Next slide is the, I think, regulatory mandated yield curve chart that I've got to show you there. Real simple, the dotted blue line is where we were in January, down at the bottom. The solid orange line is where we were to close business yesterday. I don't think there's a whole lot of mystery there. Want to be clear, we're moving from a place of extremely low interest rates to just low interest rates. So while I appreciate we'd always want the lowest cost of financing possible, we're having the lowest cost of financing possible under current market conditions. Next slide. So where we were on the final pricing results, you'll notice that the agenda title was for $10,760,000. That was the not-to-exceed amount established in your public hearing authorization over the last month. The final amount came in at 10.3 million. That's typical for us to be a little bit under that not-to-exceed. We already talked about the rating before. The true interest cost of 3.55% is similar to kind of like an APR for your personal financing needs. It's a tax-exempt, non-bank qualified issuance. I'll come back to that in a moment. 19-year term, you see the payment dates. I will say, one of the changes we made with Tiana's guidance was to get it to a seven-year call, which means that you can pay these bonds off early at seven years rather than the standard 10 or more common eight at this time. Something I really wanted to highlight here is 12% of the bonds were sold to local banks. When I visited with you a month ago, I said we'd prioritize that type of distribution, though the tax status for these bonds wasn't necessarily favorable. That's that non-bank qualified consideration. We did run pretty hard marketing to local banks. 12% is far more than I would have suggested we have gotten here, and I want to make sure that's clear. We did get favorable feedback. I was on a few of those calls. People were excited to be offered the city's bonds. The last piece was, we took down about 9% of the total transaction just to stabilize where rates are. That means the pricing doesn't change for you guys. We take the risk on that portion of the bonds to make sure the deal was priced appropriately. Next slide. Two little pieces here and we'll wrap up. Again, just from a marketing standpoint, showing our work there a little bit. You know, the offering document that you approved at your last meeting, we got out early the following week. We want to make sure we got that into local banks' hands quickly. Those folks take a little bit more time than some of the typical market participants. We had that pre-pricing feedback, working with the team this week. We ran orders this morning and wrapped things up this morning. I will tell you, Farmer State Bank, who I know you guys do some of your regular banking with, was a purchaser of the first three maturities. The bonds really stepped up from that standpoint and wanted to highlight that today. I think it's important to understand that local distribution connection we have talked about. Next slide. Real simple, just what's left today. You guys are going to do two things with single action here on the resolution today. We're going to lock in the rates and structure for the financing and authorize the levying of taxes for this for future repayment today. That'll end council's work on the series 228 bonds, and then we'll send you money to close and deliver funds for the bonds on May 10th as scheduled. So not much history from there. Happy to answer questions you have either now or after Tiana's presentation, but I want to thank you again for the opportunity. I also like to highlight finance and staff. It's a new experience for them, extra time for them, make it a seamless process for you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, nice to see you all again. Thank you for having me. I do have a short presentation. I will sort of skip over some of the things that Michael mentioned, although I have charts too because we all love graphs. So if we could go to the next slide, that'd be great. This is the amortization schedule for your bond issue. So Michael did mention that we reduced the price from 10, sorry, reduced the par amount from 10.6 million to 10,305. That's pretty typical. We also covered the rating of AA1. We've reiterated what the projects were used for. We've got library projects, sidewalks, parks. There is a final maturity, as you can see here, of 2041, the TIC that Michael mentioned, of 3.5% as well as an average life of 11 years. So even though the long term ends in 2041, because of that amortization, it has an average outstanding of around 11 years, which will become a little bit more important later. So next slide, please. I showed you this prior to the issuance of where we thought that your levy would be in conjunction with your future CIP as well. This is an update to that with the actual debt being sold now and having a finalized debt service. You'll see a peak estimated in 2027 of about 2.87 cents, dollars and eight cents, sorry. The next slide will show you that detail again. I won't belabor this because I know you saw this last time. I just wanted to update for you where we are post-sale. On page five, though, I know Michael alluded to some issuances that priced at the same time as yours or around the same time. Those were Urbrendale and Polk County. If you would mind going to the next slide, please. Thank you. In the green boxes, you'll see the spreads. And what the spread is, it's the difference between the yield on your bonds and the yield to an index. We usually refer to the MMD AAA GO index when we're pricing. And you'll see, I've also added for you in a few other columns, your last issue that was relevant to this one, which was the 2019A. You have Urbrendale's pricing results, Polk County, Ankeny, Indian Hills, another school district, and Waukees School District. And on page six, you'll see this represented graphically because I think, next slide, please. I think this is, this helps you see, so the yellow lines were the progression of our pricing from the very first indications we got to where we actually ended up. So the solid yellow line is our final pricing, whereas all of these other lines are other deals. And so as Michael mentioned, you were sort of right in there with Urbrendale, outperformed Polk County and Polk County in some maturities. So this hopefully can represent for you graphically when we say that you were sort of with your peers. You can see that you're sort of right in the middle there. The next slide shows you what all of your 11- or 12-year-ish duration maturities have looked like over the past five years. There are several issuances that are missing from the start because they were either bank qualified, they were too short, but I just wanted you to sort of see historically that green, that orange line is the average of the 11-year maturity over the last several years since 2013. You'll see way up the top, the 22A, but that is to be expected because you also see the blue line underneath it. That just shows you where rates are. And so this is sort of graphically where your true interest cost has plotted as you've sold bonds over the years. And the final page just reiterates a point that Michael also made, that you can see on the last chart that that line was very high, the top of the blue line, but this is actually the last 20 years or so. And you'll see here that even the top of our blue line is still lower than the average over that period of time. So right now, we are experiencing an increase in rates. However, historically, rates are still quite good. So you're sort of at the higher end of average over a very long period of time, but still want you to see that you're enjoying really nice look rates. So based on the information that I gathered and the conversations that we have, we certainly would agree that the pricing was rather transparent, and we think that the bonds did perform well today. We certainly don't have any reservations about that bond purchase agreement or the results from today, and I would entertain any questions if you have any for me.
Any questions?
Just a common, well, one question but a comment. I mean, obviously, the 3.5% seems high compared to what we issued bonds for a year ago, and it's only about 3/4 to 1% higher than the past few years. But I think it's certainly now an indication of future bonds are now in a new arena than what we've been having to consider. So when we start doing some of our longer-term planning, we need to start incorporating that as well. One question from Michael. You talked about, you got this, these bonds to be changed from a 10-year call to a seven-year call. Did that have any impact negatively on the interest rate?
Can I just clarify that we actually started with eight? We haven't priced with a 10-year call for a long time.
Oh, he said, he mentioned 10. Okay, so it's still in the normal arena then for a seven-year call?
Yeah. It was eight and seven, just between that. It's something Tiana recommended to line up with your, that it wasn't a major issue.
Okay, very good. That's all, thanks.
Anything else?
Right, great. Well, just, I think, part of the story here, which is positive, although interest rates have been rising for a wide variety of input considerations that nobody really has any control over. The fact that we're comparable with other like situated municipalities is a good thing.
It is.
So I think that's the silver lining to, if there's a gray cloud.
Well, and that's part of the reason for slide eight, is to give you perspective for that rate, which feels high, but really historically, it's still, you're in a good spot. Thank you.
Thank you. And staff is happy? Okay.
Yes.
Then we will go ahead and vote unless there's other comments or questions. No, all right. All those in favor of approving resolution 30484, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to receive and file job descriptions for the executive assistant, executive administrative assistant and city hall administrative assistant.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to receive and file job descriptions for the executive administrative assistant and city hall administrative assistant. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 30485, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to add the salary range for the executive administrative assistant position.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution number 30485, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to add the salary range for the executive administrative assistant position. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar for the roof replacement package associated with the existing public service maintenance facility. This will include resolution numbers 30486 through 30488. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the roof replacement package associated with the existing public service maintenance facilities, facility as follows, resolutions 30486 through 30488. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Well, I would just say, thanks for the detail that's provided on this slide. It eliminates a lot of questions we usually ask. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 22-05, amending chapter 63 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing the speed limit on Sixth Avenue as 35 miles per hour from 15th Street to 27th Street, and this is the final consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2205, amending chapter 63 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing the speed limit on Sixth Avenue as 35 miles per hour from 15th Street to 27th Street. Final consideration. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 30489, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2022 Albonet Road and Echo Hill Road intersection improvement project and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,448,666.05.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30489, approving contract of bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2022 Albonet Road and Echo Hill Road intersection improvement project and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,484,666.05. Any discussion? None again, so we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 30490, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2022 Toby Park Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $163,342.70. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution 30490, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2022 Toby Park Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $163,342.70. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole project. The presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. So this is our annual program where we replace existing brick manholes and put new concrete manholes in. We did receive four bids with the low bid coming in from BJ Breckie at $76,978, 82.59% of the engineer's estimate. Work is to commence on August 8th of '22 with 30 working days and liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day, and we are recommending approval of the contract.
Thank you. Public hearing is open, so if there's anyone in favor or opposed to this, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 30491, accepting bids and awarding contract to BJ Breckie, Inc., regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole project in the amount of $76,978. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30491, accepting bids and awarding contract to BG Breckie Incorporated regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole project in the amount of $76,978. Discussion? We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. At this time, we have another public hearing regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project. The hearing is now open. We have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. For this project, we received two bids. The low bid came in from HydroClean at $39,482.68, 78.97% of the engineer's estimate. This is a slight different program from the one that we just did. So this one, we will leave the brick manhole as is and actually put a concrete liner in the inside of it to make that so that the infiltration inflow does not occur. Work is to commence 9/12/22, 25 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages, and we are recommending proceeding with the award.
Thank you. Public hearing is open, so if anyone is here to speak in favor or in opposition, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 30492, accepting bids and awarding contract to HydroClean LLC regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project in the amount of $39,482.68. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30492, accepting bids and awarding contract to HydroClean LLC regarding the 2022 sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation project in the amount of $39,482.68. Discussion? In the amount of thirty nine thousand, four hundred and eighty two dollars and sixty eight cents. Discussion. We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And at this time, we have a public hearing regarding updates to the Marion Housing Code Plans of Inspection and Housing Code Table of Fees, City of Marion. Public hearing is now open. We have a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, your honor, counsel. Um, so. Over this real quick today, um, we sent out five hundred and seventy postcards. Um, regarding the fee changes and the, and the program changes, um, had very few uh, comments. We did have some. Um, none of them were real negative, so um, that was a good thing. Um. As of the end of March, we had five, forty five hundred and thirty eight. Um. Units in the city of Marion. That was fourteen hundred and eighty one different addresses. Um, we anticipate to be adding another three hundred and twenty six units within the next year. Um, currently, we're using one admin person and one inspector to do this. Um. Next slide, Daryl. So why do we do it? Why do we do inspections? Well, we do it for starters because the state tells us we have to. Um, the, any, any property or any city with fifteen thousand or more population has to have a housing program. Um. We do it for public safety as much as anything. Um. We, we, um. What we go, we go into these apartments, um, these houses to randomly look for um, fire prevention things like. Um, smoke detectors and electrical deficiencies. Um, that's one of the big things. Um. We look for um, health hazards. You know, if we have, if a roof is leaking or water pipes are leaking, um, and we can see that there's been moisture. We uh, don't necessarily, um, we call it out and we, we tell the uh, landlord they have to fix it. Um, we don't mitigate it ourselves. We just, we just identify it and tell them they have to take care of it. Um. We look for hazards, um, for dilapidated uh, structures, you know, decks. Um, could be a ceiling falling in, could be anything like that. Do you think it'd be a danger to the tenants? Um. Um, so next, next one, Daryl. So, um. Why are, why are we doing this? The reasons for these changes? So we have almost a twenty five percent no show. Um, in our, in our inspections right now. It's gotten a little better because we've, we've tried to improve some of our communications to our landlords. Um, so I think it's getting a little better than that, but there for a while it was, it was really bad. Um, we're hoping that some of these changes will increase the awareness of the, from the landlords of things that. Um, the penalties and stuff that they have to pay, um, if there's an issue, uh, and they don't show up, uh, or don't make the corrections. Um. I know that there's a lot of landlord, well, I shouldn't say a lot. There's a few landlords. There's a small percentage that makes it bad for the rest of them. Um, and when we have those, uh, we may go, we may go thirty, sixty, ninety days to get. Um, an apartment or a house fixed up, and there's really no reason that we should be going that long. The tenants don't deserve to have. Um, being in a, in a uh, apartment that's not up to code, that's not safe. Um. So the housing plans with inspections changes, we, a lot of it is, is language. We pulled some of the. Um, things out, um, and put it in the nuisance code because it really belonged to nuisance code, which. Um, that's being revised right now as well. Um. We, um. We changed the permit to a license, which it was just a small thing. It really doesn't affect anything. It just helps with our. Um, with our software that we have. The wording goes better with that. Um, a lot of things have been changed to be more enforceable. Uh, there's a couple of examples. Um, we're trying to make it clear as to what happens if. Um, we don't get compliance, um, we don't get, we don't get payment for the fees, uh, that kind of thing. And we have also changed the number of inspections before we um, go to that point. We went from uh, four previously, now we're going to three, but even with three, you could, you could realistically be still looking at. You know, sixty days or more, um, before we get compliance. Um, we have done some small things like we added certified mail fees. Um, because we will be sending for certified mail to some of the um, landlords if, not the first time we send out the notice, but if we have to send out multiple notices and. The landlord, we have to send them certified to make sure they're getting them, so that they have to, to pay those fees. Um, we have changed some of the wording on complaints, so hopefully that will um, get better. Um, and then we added that we are sharing information with the um, fire department, police department, so the three departments and. Um, are working together as opposed to on, on some of these, some of them are just a building thing, some may just be a policing, but. We're working together on the ones that have multiple um, issues that we're trying to get compliance on. Um, the uh, housing table of fees, um, truthfully, we didn't really change a whole lot. Um, we did add past due fees, um, so if the, if a landlord doesn't pay their, their fees and, you know, appropriate time, then they, they're gonna get a. Um, past due fee added to that. Um. And if it, when we did, we did clarify that if it, if a property, there are fees that goes non paid for ninety days. Then it's gonna go to the um, tax assessment process, and it'll be assessed on the property taxes. Um, we did change the multi unit fee, so the, what, what we've done in the past is, um, we have a, we have a base fee for the building. And if you're, if you're four units or less, you, that's all you pay. There's a base fee for that, for that unit. Um, now, if you have, if you have multiple units that have more than four, then we, we did, we're asking to bump the. Ten dollars a unit to fifteen dollars a unit. We find that we're spending a lot of time in these bigger multi unit um, complexes. Um, we did clarify the non payment, non compliance. Um, talked about that, there's, will be a municipal infraction if they, if they um, aren't taken care of. Um, and then we are asking to add a rescheduling fee. Um. We have, we have quite a number of, of landlords when we're sending out our emails, um. This is, the first of all, we send out the letter at least thirty days ahead of time, and gives the date that we want to, we want to inspect. Um, then after that, um, about a, a week or like the Monday before, um, the. Forward week, um, that you, we would do the inspection, we send out an email. And uh, we tell the landlord, we're gonna be there. This is the time. Well, we've been an awful lot of people calling back and saying, well, I can't make that time work. Um, so we are, we are gonna charge a twenty five dollar reschedule fee, um, is what we're asking to do. Um, now that can be waived, um, at our discretion. You know, if somebody is sick, and we had a lot of problems with COVID going around. And maybe not so much recently, we did there for a while. Um, and rescheduled a lot. That's one of the things that we don't want our inspector going in when there's, when there's an illness, whether it's COVID or something else. Um, there may be a, a death in the family or um, someplace, somebody that they know close that is gonna be an issue with a, a. Um, being at the inspection at that time. We would waive the fees for that. There's some other things that we've thought of that are similar to that, that we're gonna. Um, we use our discretion, we're gonna uh, waive the fees. I think it's the next one time, Daryl. Um, so. We, we do the comparable cities. Um, I'm not gonna get into a lot of depth. We talked a lot about it on, on Tuesday night. Um, but we have compared our housing program to the cities that we have up here on the, on the screen. Um, most of them will charge you a yearly license fee, which is what we're, we already do. Um, most of them do not charge a reschedule fee. Uh, Cedar Rapids, I, is, that says unknown, but they do not at this time, and although I did talk to the. Guy down there and, and he's thought that was a pretty good idea, so that may come about down there. Uh, Hiawatha does charge a, a reschedule fee. Um, and everyone is all over the board on, on, on how many, um, how much time between inspections. Some do a year, some do five years. Um, so we're, we're at two. Um, I think we're, I think. Because we had so many complaints back in twenty nineteen, that, that time of the year, that's when we changed it to two, and I think that our complaints have helped. I think the, the uh. Um, inspections being more often has helped. Um. So our, our fees are maybe slightly higher in some places, but on the, in the long run, on, on most of those, our fees are really pretty similar. Um, we're not too far off. Um, most of them have um, multiple inspectors that do their, their inspections. Um, for instance, Cedar Rapids has, has seven inspectors, or actually have six. They have a seventh one starting next week. Um, so they have seven inspectors and they, they do about, they have about twenty two thousand um, housing units. Um, in Cedar Rapids, so they're looking at about sixteen hundred a year per person. Um, where. Um, our inspector, um, in Marion, every two year, well, every, every year, he does twenty two hundred and fifty, so. Um, I think we're doing, I think we're doing good. Um. I, um, guess I welcome comments, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Public hearing is open, so if there's anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. We will get to in favor, uh, next. Yes, thank you. Anyone here to speak in favor of the changes, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Do we have the little cards to fill out still? Have you could fill out one of the little cards for the clerk?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Marcia Swatzky, and I actually live in Lisbon, but we have three homes, and that my husband Dave and I. Um, we're in town in Marion, and. As far as favor, I'm, I think it's solid. It's more, I wanted to thank you for letting me know about this meeting. Because we've had rentals in um, Marion for nine years, and I've always felt a disconnect. And I just appreciate being included and being a part of the process, and I would love to encourage more of that because. Um, Dave and I, when we first started thinking about rentals years ago, he, he had this idea and I said. I can only do it. I, I cannot be a slim landlord. I can only do it if their houses are on par with how we maintain ours. And um, I don't know why I'm nervous. Anyways, um, and that's our heart, that's our business plan. And what I would love to see is instead of a us them thing going on, I'd love to see the strength. Of working together and encouraging landlord education, tenant education. All kinds of things that we can do that are expensive. It's out there. It's just getting people together, work together. To talk about like some of the issues, um, regarding. For example, no shows. Or, or one, one thing that's close to my heart is idea that there's landlords out there that aren't even registered. They're. Kind of floating out in the ether, and that's not fair to them if they don't know what's going on. Or if they do, they need to adult up on that. It's also not fair to their tenants. And you know, sometimes we get wonderful tenants and others, we've had to train a bit, and it's like. Training because their land, previous landlords didn't. So call it a little bit selfish there, but I think when everybody is working together and there's a spirit of encouragement and we know where we're headed. Safe, clean, well kept housing that is welcoming. That's our goal. And maybe I'm an anomaly, but actually I've talked to quite a few landlords. You probably don't hear about them because. They aren't the squeaky wheel, but, but they're out there and. They want connection, so if that helps, I just appreciate being included. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you could fill out the card real quick for, thank you. Come forward, please.
My name's Linda Miller, four thousand one, North Tenth Street, may, may not be north. Tenth Street, Marion, Iowa. I'm a landlord, and there is an organization called Landlords of Lynn County that landlords can join. And it will help them through a lot of this stuff, and you can find it on the internet. And I, I've got a joint backup. I haven't been there for years. And um, that would probably help a lot of more landlords could join something like that, and it gives them some guidance. And uh. You know, they get to interact and converse with each other about what's worked for them and what hasn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you could take a moment to fill out one of the cards for your comment tonight, please? Anyone else like to address? The council in favor? Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mayor Protam, I make a motion approving resolution number three zero four nine three approving the two thousand twenty two Marion Housing Code Plans of Inspection as required by. One six five point zero six of the Marion Housing Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four nine three approving the two thousand twenty two Marion Housing Code Plans of Inspection. As required by one six five point zero six of the Marion Housing Code. Any discussion?
I think it'd be nice just to add another comment, and Gary wants to come back up and, and add some comments as well, but. Uh, on Tuesday, we had quite a bit of discussion talking about some software. That Gary's department is considering, which will make the entire, hopefully the entire process for the landlords. Make the process for his department much more efficient, so uh, that is something that I know he's working on for his department. And uh, so I know we'll have some more discussion about that, but that is something that uh, seems to, we, seems, seems will have. A number of benefits for both the people in that department as well as the landlords.
Anything else? Alright, seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine four approving the two thousand twenty two Housing Code Table of Fees. As required by one six five point zero five of the Marion Housing Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four nine four approving the two thousand twenty two Housing Code Table of Fees as required. By one six five point zero five of the Marion Housing Code. Discussion.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Gary, just to clarify, and I think we covered off on this on Tuesday, but. Upon first notification, the first letter that goes out, that somebody is scheduled, a, a landlord is scheduled for an inspection. If they call right away, they can, they can reschedule that if they know they have a, a, a given conflict. So if they receive the letter and the next day they call you, is there, there's no penalty for that, is there?
Um, well, actually, the way it's written, there, there could be, but if they do call right away, that's one of the things we could, we can waive the fee. Um, it's, it's, the bigger problem is when they call five days ahead of time, we're trying to figure out where we're putting people.
Right. Okay, I, so there's a little bit of latitude.
There is some latitude there, so we have had that happen where people, we, they get the letter, they call us right away. And they're saying, well, you scheduled this during a work time. I can't get off work or something. Can we do it? Another time, we still have to try and find a place for them.
Right.
But there's some latitude. It's the ones that really come in late that we're really trying to avoid.
Okay, alright, so there's, there's latitude to incent good behaviors when it gets done.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine five approving the Sweet Cheesecake Central Corridor Review. For property located at thirteen sixty seventh avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Brian and Nikki Guild.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four nine five approving the Sweet Cheesecake Central Corridor Review. For property located at thirteen sixty seventh avenue, Marion, Iowa. Discussion.
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think uh, Mayor Nick mentioned this during our work session. This is just a very nice. Um, upgrade to the property, the intent, uh, what they're doing there. Um, it's, so it's, uh, not only is it, it makes that environment nicer, but also it's going to be attractive for their business. And I would imagine draw a lot of folks in, so it's a good job, good development.
Any other discussion? I do have one question for you, Tom. On Tuesday, you had mentioned, uh, there were a couple of things going to those zoning board of adjustments. Curious how those, uh, I believe both of those were approved. Both were, okay. Good to know. Thank you. Uh, nothing else? I will go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve resolution number three zero four. Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine six, approving the West End Central Corridor Review for property located at eight oh nine Sixth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Annette Perry.
Second.
It's moved in second and to approve resolution number three zero four nine six, approving the West End Central Corridor Review for property located at eight oh nine Sixth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. Any discussion? We will vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine seven, approving an encroachment agreement with Hipster regarding use of the city sidewalk and vacated alleyway for outdoor dining for property located at eleven twenty-seventh Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve resolution number three zero four nine seven, approving an encroachment agreement with Hipster regarding use of the city sidewalk and vacated alleyway for outdoor dining for property located at eleven twenty-seventh Avenue. Any discussion?
Yes, yeah, so Tom, their manner of doing this is going to be sort of a advanced preview of the requirements that we'll more generally have for the outdoor dining.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so they're the test case.
Yeah, so we've held them to the standards that would be included in the document that's been moving through the council.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? We will vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine eight, approving a permanent easement agreement with Les Arnold for property located at ten thirty-eight and forty-eight Seventh Avenue to permit stairs to encroach into the east-west alley between tenth and eleventh streets and seventh and eighth avenues.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve resolution number three zero four nine eight, approving a permanent easement agreement with Les Arnold for property located ten thirty-eight and forty-eight Seventh Avenue to permit stairs to encroach into the east-west alley between tenth and eleventh streets and seventh and eighth avenue. Discussion. Yes, sir. I had a chance to speak with Mr. Arnold before the meeting and I know there are a number of concerns of council and we were able to talk a little bit about those and he's, he's requested that this item be tabled into the next meeting. Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to table the
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move to table resolution number three zero four nine eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to table resolution three zero four nine eight, any discussion on that? Yes, ma'am.
We, we do need the, since it was a motion to table, there's a second motion, so we will need the original motion either withdrawn or amended to be a motion to table. So because the motion was made to approve and now it's going to be tabled, there's two motions floating out there. So can we have, Councilor Harper, can you please withdraw your original motion?
Yes, counselor.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, I'm moved to withdraw my approval for resolution number three zero four nine eight.
Second.
Do we have to vote on that or does she just have to withdraw it?
He can just withdraw and apologies, that is not generally how we have done it in the past. But our city manager has just reminded me that that is actually the proper procedure. He, he had a better legal hat than I did today.
So from now on, if there's ever anything being tabled, we just have to withdraw the motion and then make a motion to table it. Okay, yes, sir.
Technically, in the past, haven't we tabled some of these items without reading it?
Yes, when we know ahead of time that we're going to table something, we don't make the motion.
Right.
We just make a motion to table it.
That's okay, that's been our normal process, we know that.
Yes, because usually we do know ahead of time, sometimes we don't know ahead of time. So if the original motion isn't made, and the mayor will frequently say like, hold on, we have two motions happening and then he directs traffic.
Understand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so right now we have a motion on the table to table the resolution, correct? Correct, all right, so do we need to discuss that or are we going to vote on that? Are you confused?
Yeah.
I appreciate the discussion with this owner and listening to some of the concerns and questions because I think there's a, a great way that we can work with our very devoted local business owners to create a great environment there. So I appreciate the fact that we're like trying to work on a solution and address some of those concerns because I think we'll come up with a great solution, but I know it seems kind of sudden and just want them to know or look forward to working with them on the solution to that request.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and vote on tabling this. All those in favor of tabling resolution three zero four nine eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four nine nine, approving contract with Maxfield Research and Consulting LLC for completion of housing needs assessment and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve resolution number three zero four nine nine, approving contract with Maxfield Research and Consulting LLC for completion of housing needs assessment and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And we're on to no other department discussion, we have a public forum now, this time set aside for comments from the public. If anyone would like to address council, please come forward to the podium now. Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Sarah.
Starting on this side, let's actually have a couple. Many of the department heads know about this, but for anybody who is watching this or would like to pass the word on, invitation on April thirtieth, Saturday, it's the Marion City Showcase, it's also Healthy Kids Day at the Marion Y. This is a free community event and open to families, there's lots of activities, learn more about the community with the city, but also some of the Y on the pillars of healthy families, eating healthy, eat, sleep, get exercise, time together. So we look forward to people coming out and checking out, it's from nine until noon, indoors and outdoors, but if weather permitting, we'll have to just be indoors, but it's going to be a great morning at the Y with the city and the Y. That's my big thing.
Okay, Steve.
How many of you enjoyed the fun in the sun today? How many got out? Wasn't that nice? Finally, we got a day. So also enjoying that was Culvers Landscaping had a biz mix this afternoon from four to six. So several of us stopped out there to enjoy the scenery there, so obviously a beautiful place. Culvers has been a fantastic company to have in Marion, they've done a wonderful job. And many of us buy lots of flowers from there, so anyway, that was really nice to go out there, I'm glad they've got, they had it today and not tomorrow. So that was a fun time, enjoyed that.
Yeah, two items. First off, I want to thank principally Mike Barcalo. We, we, we had a lot of discussion and some, some output from our most recent airport committee meeting. And there were several issues that related directly with airport safety, which is kind of the top ten hit list for us as we think longer term about the airport. There was discussion around some navigational aids that should be considered potentially for a DOT grant. Also, the bearing of immediately adjacent power lines just north of the, the runway out there, as well as then an automated weather observation system for the airport. And so on the heels of that discussion, I know staff is making some outreach to our, our consulting aviation experts to help us understand that with a little bit greater texture so that what we have is the highest probability of receiving DOT funding for one of those options. So I just want to say thanks for the, being proactive on that, getting their insights. They, they know the psyche of the Iowa DOT as well as what is best practice across the industry, so appreciate that. The second item, and this is really probably the most important, a couple of weeks ago, my, my wife and I had just returned home from doing some errands. And as of, I think my council colleagues know, I'm presently flying the Ukraine flag. Soon as that conflict started and saw the severity of that, I just decided that in a small way, that would be, you know, a small show of support, either visually or emotionally. Well, prior to that, just after starting to fly the flag, I noticed there was, now, I, I'm the senior citizen in the neighborhood. So a young, younger woman with her baby was out on a walk in the stroller and I noticed she was looking at the flag and I just waved and said hi and went about my business. Well, the day that we returned from doing errands, she stopped and she introduced herself and we were chatting and she said, thank you for flying my flag. And I said, what? And she told me her name. She had just, she and her husband had met, he's, he's a pilot. They had met apparently overseas in, in Ukraine or in, in that area. They got married and she came here and she relocated with, with her husband to Marion, Iowa. And she proceeded not to want to talk so much about the Ukraine conflict, which her mother is in Poland, she still has direct relatives that are in Ukraine. She didn't really want to dwell so much on that, but what she did dwell on is how much she enjoys living in Marion. Team Marion, way to go.
Ryan would like to add something, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to add to Councilperson Mensers' comments about the city showcase, we are all asking, we are encouraging attendees to bring a non-perishable food donation to support the churches of Marion Food Pantry. So we're highlighting our, our city, but also trying to do some good as well. And then just a reminder also that tomorrow at two, between two and four at our brand new fire station on Irish Drive, we will be celebrating the storied career of our fearless chief, Kribel, who is actually, this is her last official city council meeting tonight. But I know that we will have some recognition later on, but we have that tomorrow, so we hope that folks will come out and, and celebrate the wonderful career that she's had here and, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, thank you, chief. I'm going to miss you sitting over there. Six years up here and you've always been sitting over there, so it's going to be, it's going to be quite different seeing Jason sitting there for a while. But thank you, thank you for your, for your service to Marion, it's well appreciated. And I know everybody in town loves you so much, so you're going to hopefully have a lot of people there tomorrow. And so it's two to four and then, did you say there's a presentation at three, is that correct? Did I read that somewhere? Presentation at three, yes, Jason's saying yes, so. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So now we have a closed session to go into, so.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, can we have a legal statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed closed session regarding litigation and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
We are adjourned to closed session, we will come back after we are finished. Thank you.